Hey everybody, it is six oh one. I am hereby calling this meeting to order, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
De Penya.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Councilmember Notori may be joining us later. Councilmember Rovell.
Here.
Councilmember Shumalo Burke. Mayor Melon.
Here, sent try notice?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, May sixth, twenty twenty editions of the Bellevle Times and Star Ledger. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Bellevle Town Hall bulletin board and copies on the municipal clerk's office.
Pledge of allegiance. So I do want to welcome everybody. I know I said it right before we started to our first live meeting, something I've been waiting for for a while. Greeting all the participants that are watching us live on Facebook. And for those of you who have not been here regularly, this is our first meeting in a month, which means it is our combined conference and regular meeting. We have several discussions on the agenda today. These discussions are placed on the agenda by either myself or any member of the council. And the very conversations, I know it's a little awkward, but really you're here as an audience to watch and listen to us deliberate. There is no portion of this section of the meeting for public commenting. So if you do hear something that piques your interest, you have a question about something, you can certainly ask and address those comments or concerns during public participation section of the meeting. A little awkward, you're going to basically watch us have a conversation on multiple topics. The first topic that we have, actually, I did hear Councilman Rovell is here. I don't hear him over the speakers. Is he, where is he being piped in from? Councilman Rovell, can you just speak so we can?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Barely. Is there a way that Tommy, that we can get him louder? We're just going to try and get you louder, Steve. Sorry. Hold on one second. Are you on a cell phone? Can you just talk again, Steve?
Okay, here I am.
Yeah, that's better. All right, thank you. All right, so the first topic is summer concerts. For those of you who follow the, I'm not sure it's on the township social media, but I know I put it out last week. Township is doing summer concert series this year for the first time. We are planning a seven week concert series. Mr. Manager has some expertise in this and it's something that we're very proud of. We're doing it. One, it's a, it's a new thing for us. I know historically, we have done a concert or two. We've never really done a continual series like this. We will have multiple genres. So in case anybody that's listening is concerned, and of all the positive comments and likes that I got on my social media, most of the comments revolved around who has a band, who has a cousin, who has a friend. I am not doing any of the booking. I promise you, I am not doing the booking. So we will have though, I know I had a conversation with the manager, we will have multiple genres represented. Certainly, we're going to have oldies. We're going to have some eighties rock. We're definitely going to have a Latin band, country, country, I'm told. Okay. We're working on it. So it's soul. We're definitely going to have a soul night. So it's going to be seven weeks. I'm very excited about that. The reason why I brought that up and the reason why that I put it on for discussions because the Fourth of July itself is still in limbo. As much as I'm in favor of finally having a Fourth of July ceremony, Bellevle historically does an amazing job for Fourth of July. We are probably one of the best in northern New Jersey. We get a lot of people showing up for it and it's a tragedy that we haven't been able to have it. So while that still remains in limbo, we figured in case we don't have Fourth of July, we're at least going to provide the residents something to do all summer long. Concerts are a lot easier. You can socially distance. You can sit on a blanket with your family. It's, it's a little different. So you can't really make the argument, well, how can you not have Fourth of July but have concerts because we could allow you to socially distance. We're even talking about maybe like a BYOB or something like that, depending on where we actually have the location. So I just kind of wanted to put those two up there to say that we are doing it. Now that I think about it, summer concerts might be where you and I first met. Ten, ten years ago, right? Ten, ten, yeah. How long ago were you in Seek Caucus?
Well, maybe fifteen years.
Fifteen years ago. That's probably where I was working in Seek Caucus and you were the manager. No, I don't remember the first song. We were not together in a blanket. I was a vendor, he was the manager. So that summer concerts, we're really looking forward to that. I'm assuming lineup will be announced shortly. I'm assuming location will be announced shortly. I'm assuming a lot more detail is going to be coming forthcoming. With that said, I just want real quick, I don't want to take a lot of time on a lot of these discussion items, but Fourth of July, if we can just get some council members maybe to weigh in if restrictions are lifted enough where outdoor events can be held, I'm assuming council members would be somewhat interested in exploring Fourth of July still?
Yes.
Yes, seems that way. Yeah.
How it's, yes.
Yeah, so.
Location is tricky.
Location is tricky. For those of you who might not realize it, our municipal stadium complex is undergoing a six million dollar renovation. Further adding to complications because while the grandstands are fine and parking, you know, you can't park, you can't park there because that's where they shoot the fireworks off from. And we really can't utilize much of, we don't really utilize that area much during the concerts. People do sit on the hill. That is no longer a hill. So just so the public knows, it's, Fourth of July is not dead in the water here in Bellevle. It's something that's going to be a fluid, dynamic situation. We actually were open to doing it last year and we could not find a vendor that actually wanted to do it. So I think as we come out, what, where do we know offhand what the current outdoor capacity is, Mr. Martino?
I think it's five hundred.
So current outdoor capacity is five hundred?
Yeah.
We get thousand. However, however, we could have a council meeting there. And legislative proceedings are exempt according to the governor's executive order. Covid does not, so maybe we just do our, our, our reorg, we do our reorg meeting on Fourth of July.
It's thinking outside the box.
It's what we do here. So, okay, so we're going to, I'm going to keep this conversation going between the manager, the attorney, and the council member. So real quick, that was really it. The last item that I have is recorded phone lines. We've made a lot of technical upgrades during Covid. This building has gone from the stone age to really high tech. Unfortunately, many of you, the residents, haven't been able to be in here to take part of it, but I know our employees have, have been a part of it. Our employees have embraced it. They are twinning their phones when they're not here. They're doing all kinds of cool stuff and I don't really think they get enough credit for one, keeping the doors open as much as they have during Covid. Bellevle is one of the few municipalities that never shut our doors during Covid. There was a brief time that we had a skeleton crew here, but there are still many municipalities that are not even open for business and we are actually here having a live proceeding. So congrats and thank you to our employees. Again, the reason why I say recorded phone lines is because I typically, as I say all the time, the chief complaint officer, just in the last two weeks alone, the manager, assistant manager, aware, I get emails all the time of, I called Town Hall and somebody told me this. I called Town Hall and I was told the wrong information. And I know it because I deal with the public all the time. Most of the time they're wrong. This is not a knock on our employees. I actually think recording the phone lines would actually defend the employees so that when the manager goes back and reviews it, we can actually prove that our employees did not make a mistake. But I say that because we now in Bellevle got roof keys, we have swipe access for everything. We have wifi now throughout the building. We're twinning our phones. We're doing all this great high tech stuff. Every other business out there records the phone lines. You hear a little beep or reminder that this line is being recorded. And I really think it would do me a big service because I get all the complaints and then I complain to the manager. The manager complains to the staff. And a lot of times the staff didn't do anything wrong. It would be nice to be able to do that. And I know that was planned. I know I've asked multiple times for proposals. So maybe, Mr. Manager, you can just give us an update.
Just, just a quick update. I'm glad I'm sitting next to Tommy, but Verizon has a lease program that we looked at. It's a lease program, so we don't own it. It's fifteen hundred dollars a month. Obviously, that's eighteen thousand a year. Not too excited about spending eighteen thousand dollars a year. So we looked into buying a system. Johnson gave us a estimate back in February for fifty one thousand. So that's the dilemma. The quality assurance recordings are very beneficial, but they, right now, it appears that they're very expensive. I'm trying to find something better than leasing for eighteen thousand or buying for fifty one.
So is this, so is the fifteen, is the fifty one thousand for entire municipality or is it just? So right now, I believe, well, we're, we're doing the upgrades. So the first thing to do is to bring the network together. So for everybody to know, every building that we have, right, had their own internet connection. It was not brought together, their own voice system, nothing. So we are actually bringing that together. So we put an MPLS network in place. We're actually getting ready to cut that over. Once we cut that over, it's another widget that we can work with JCC on to where four digit, five digit dialing plans now become today, now we have to dial from building to building and say, I gotta dial nine digits. It becomes four or five, whatever we want to do. But at that point, every building can have recording. So my question is, is the fifty one thousand dollars for the entire municipality or just one?
I think it was the whole town.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and I'll resend out the quote because I know you, I know it goes back to February, but you, you had it in February.
Because now that we're networked, it's the right thing to do because we're running off of one system. Right. Recording on it.
So I would assume that means that we're purchasing hardware, the fifty one. So I'm just on the record, I'm not a fan of purchasing hardware because we tend to not maintain it and service contracts add up. And then three years later, you gotta buy something else because it's outdated. I love leasing. I think eighteen thousand dollars, it's a big number, but I think it's worth it. We just spent fifty thousand dollars a year on, on other software. So, I mean, nobody should, up here should really blink at eighteen thousand dollars. I think we would get a benefit, the residents would get a benefit, and I think our employees would get a benefit out of it. Either way, I, we need a solution because but we're constant, I'm constantly being told and then I, I get on the manager, the manager then gets on directors and it's just.
And I, and Mayor, I totally agree. I, I totally agree with you about recording, but the functionality of voice recording is one piece. Now you have to look at capabilities with the phones that are there, the DID numbers, the analog service, all of the service that is in place today at every one of our buildings is antiquated. It's old. I mean, I, I can tell you the phones are staticy, their phones break. Phones are not cheap. So if we bundle it all and we have a standard, you know, I, that's, that's the way I look at it. I don't believe it's a lot of hard, the hardware needs to be upgraded at each location, yes. But it's, it's all a lot of configuration that needs to be done. So.
Tackle our phones.
Yes.
So the issue, in case the public is wondering, most people these days, corporate offices have voice over IP phones. When I came here three years ago, we still had, I think, CAT two or CAT three in the walls. And that wasn't, we, we didn't want to spend the eighty thousand dollars to upgrade the wiring on that side of the building, so we bought a, a brand new phone system that was outdated the day we bought it. Not we, but before. So I think phones are the next thing, but anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there. I know we've done some work and done some homework on that. Do we have Councilman Burke yet on the phone? Just keep checking to make sure. You might have to admit her. Everybody comes in. How many people on right now?
Hey, just real quick, my line dropped, so I had to dial back in, so.
Okay, so that's it for me. I did my three real quick. I know Deputy Mayor had a couple of things that he wanted to talk about.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd just like to touch, you know, touch on each one of these topics. So like the mayor said, we're doing great renovations here with, with, with the high school and in our parks. But the question I had is around ordinances. And I, I asked the question, I don't know, do we have an ordinance in place for times, for, for detailed protocol on how these things are kept because we are putting a lot of money into them? And I believe we need to keep them, not only, which the chief does keeps them safe, but we need to maintain them. And we need to keep them locked down, you know, for Bellevle residents. Bellevle residents should have first priority and should have a good place to go for parks and recreation for the life of it. I mean, we, you know, prior council put a field in, did a good job, but I can tell you that right afterwards, fences, things were broken. And it got beat up. So I don't know if there is an ordinance in place and if there isn't, I think we need time with all of this money we're investing into Fairway, into the town, that we need to put something in place and, and keep tight reins on it and watch it.
Even if there is, we should. We should definitely update it.
While trespassing times.
Times, right, yeah.
If you're ever at the rec house, that horrible metal sign that says you can't do anything, no laughing, no playing, no running, no nothing, that, there's an ordinance number underneath that. I don't know if you've had a chance to review it.
The only ordinance that we have is an ordinance that, it's in the police regulations and it's, all it says is when parks are open. It doesn't say anything else. It has nothing with respect to regulation of parks. There's an ordinance on tonight that is, that it's a completely new ordinance that I drafted that says parks, recreation. But the only thing in it right now is going to be the community garden. I drafted it that way so that, and you and I had a discussion about it, I drafted it that way so that we can add what a parks and recreation ordinance is supposed to have.
No, I'm down with that. Yeah, definitely.
Because the only thing that's regulated right now is time.
Right.
And the only thing the police can enforce is time. It doesn't have anything with respect to permitting, permits and things like that.
I, I could have swore we had one on, on the football field.
We don't have any structure at all.
And, and that's why I wanted to bring it up to see what the council felt and, you know, start having that conversation because we're investing a lot of money into it and I think that has to be done before all of these fields get done. Anyways, I, I know. I get calls left and right from Fairway. I get them now, I'll roll into the dog park. The dog park is beautiful. Three weeks ago, when I was working, I walk a lot through town, just let everybody know. I'm sorry.
Can I just stop you one second, just so the public knows, the dog park is beautiful. It's not yet complete, finished. Is that, open is the wrong word. It's not yet, it's not yet completed. I think, and I was going to bring that up to dovetail off what you were saying. I see Bobby's here, our D W director. Thank you for putting the sign up, but the sign says dog park closed. I think people think that it's like, it's five o'clock, so therefore it's closed. I don't think they realize it's not open for business. It's not finished or not completed yet. So maybe because I think people are actually thinking that when they go there, it's parked, it's closed again. I don't think they realize it's not yet finished, therefore it's not formally open yet. I was going to bring that, I'm sorry, cut you off.
That is familiar. And, and I, I bring it up because I've seen kids playing in it. They're actually throwing frisbee in it. They're, they're playing in it and then, then they go outside, the frisbee goes in the street.
Yeah.
And, you know, God forbid, but with that also, Steve, Mr. Martino, would that come up into an ordinance too? Would that fall under the same blanket?
We do another section, yeah, definitely.
Oh, great.
Hey, we, excuse me, can you guys hear me?
They are to add whatever you wish to add.
Hello?
No, but thank you.
The only thing that had been discussed is the community garden, which will be in place in terms of the ordinance.
Yeah, no, so thank you for, for starting that. I want to get into next, another line item is Hendricks Field. You know Hendricks is being done and doing a great job. And I've had a discussion with the mayor because as you, as I walk around Franklin Avenue, Garden Avenue, to Alamon Street, there are trees, there's debris, there's a lot of things that are all over the, you know, it's just not nice for Bellevle. And I did discuss with the mayor and the mayor did reach out to the county, correct mayor? And I know he's doing everything he can, but Anthony just stepped out. Walking last week, every day I should say, Garden Avenue, there is a lot of, and Bobby do a great job, your team does a great job. So this is not a negative thing. It's just resources. It's something that we need to do on our main streets and other streets, but I just put Hendricks up because it's an eyesore, not Hendricks. When you're coming from North Nanina is on Franklin Avenue, all that debris on Franklin Avenue hanging over trees. Trucks hit them. And I roll with all of this. Trucks hit them, land on my car. Truck was in front of me, debris came down to my car. I didn't call it in, but I know it's not getting done, but it needs to be done. It needs to be fixed. It's the same thing on Garden Avenue, the sidewalk. I couldn't even walk on the sidewalk. All the debris on Garden Avenue coming off the golf course, but it's on our property.
So I have, doing my mayor's report, I'm going to give a Hendricks update and I'm going to talk about that a little bit.
Okay, so I just want, I just think that we need to address these things. I don't know, I, Mayor, uh, my manager, Anthony, you stepped out. It's I talked about Hendricks Field, but it's the perimeter of Hendricks Field that a lot of debris on the sidewalk and between the sidewalk and the street is out of control. And I did say Bobby and team is doing a great job. It probably has to get ticked up on a, but a lot of these things, it's, I think it's more county, but it's hanging over on our stuff and it, it's just getting worse. Okay, so.
Can you guys hear me at all? Can you hear me?
It's not about you.
Okay, can I continue?
Yes.
Thank you. Commercial vehicles on the streets in the past two weeks. I brought this up, God knows, I think, two years ago. Commercial vehicles are hap, they're, they're, they're parking near on the streets and in the parking lot of homes and they're eyesores. I had three people call me and I don't know if that's a code chief. I don't know if it's, if we go to code or if it's. It's code. Okay, so that's what, okay. But we definitely need to address that. I don't know, I don't know the council's feeling.
Yeah, I think we, we do have the street, right, chief, street.
Right, okay, so, so parking ordinance against that though, right? Overnight commercial vehicle overnight.
It's in place already.
That is.
Six one one eight, the three, four, two, six, one, one, eight.
Okay. Okay, so, so in, in.
He's probably having problems and he's got to come back on. He's, he's three, four, two, the three, four, two now.
Okay, so that goes back to, that goes back to walking around and.
Steve, Steve is trying to talk and, and.
I know.
Just put the phone to the microphone.
There's only six people on the call. You want to get a speak if you're here. All right, try it one more time.
Is Marie trying to do the same thing? Uh, hold on.
This is just very disrupting to, to the conversation.
Five, six, seven, oh, two, three, eight.
Are the other six on the call?
Yeah, no.
And, and, and they can hear us?
Assuming that, yeah.
So then it's, then it's local.
Yeah. All right, sorry to, I know it's disrupting, but go ahead.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Thank you. So commercial vehicles. So if I heard you correctly, so when we're called upon, as I have been in the driveway on property is code. Streets are you? Okay, now goes to code. How do we, how, if I can walk around, Anthony, and I can see one of these things blatantly, how come we are not seeing? And if we're not seeing them, we need to start seeing them. I don't know who, I, I, it's about, if it's resources, we need to address it, my personal opinion, but like I said, if I see it and I'm walking and it's there, just like trees, just like other things. Things, I, I really personally think things start, they start having, they need to be addressed. We can't keep pushing that can down the road. So I don't know where it falls, but I'm sure you'll handle it.
Yeah, and listen, I, I say a simple text and a phone, again, I would like that all of our employees, when they're out in the field, notice the things that you noticed. I, I think if obviously that would be beneficial to all of us. But certainly, if you see something and we get a text, we get an email, we jump on it immediately. So I mean, again, I will talk to all of our employees that are out in the field, regardless of what their responsibility is, what their job title is. If they're out in the field and they come across something that you can see, they should be able to see as well.
No, thank you. And last but not least, it's parking meters. So we sat here two years ago and we had a discussion on parking meters. I know Chief, you did a great job. We had some people in here. And then we talked about the new landscape on Washington Avenue and that that got pushed back. Am I right, Mayor? That got pushed back to what? Twenty-three?
Twenty-three or four now.
Twenty-three, twenty-four. And I know we were trying to make it all come together real nice. But again, walking on Washington Avenue this past week, I just, I just think, you know, I see the parking lot being utilized, the new technology in the parking lot being utilized. And I'm, is there any way that we can? Is there any way that we can really start pushing if, instead of waiting for the landscape, if we can start moving forward because we are antiquated and and they're shot and, and we are losing money. And I, I just, I really believe we should put our best foot forward. We put a lot of feet forward, but I.
Yeah, so we.
I agree. And I'm with you.
Hey, can you guys hear me at all?
Okay, no, I just.
So it would be in the twenty twenty-one capital budget, okay?
Please use the microphone, Mr. Mayor.
It would be in the twenty twenty-one capital budget. The company that has provided the pay station has a meter that we looked at that has the applications that could do credit cards, coins, apps. So we'll, we'll get you that information, but we had always kind of planned to absorb that expense in a capital budget.
Bitcoin, state bitcoin?
Not Bitcoin.
Okay.
Better get ahead of it.
No, thank you.
Creating a Bellevle coin, by the way.
I like it. Thank you.
Very welcome. While we just have a brief minute before we transition to report, Mayor, do we have Councilman Rovell on the line?
Hey, I'm here. You can't hear me though. Can anybody hear me?
His, his number's there.
We have him on, but for some reason they can't. Is that going to be a problem though, when, when everyone has to public comment?
This is why, this is why you don't have live meetings this way.
I know.
Just, I, I just kind of ask a question. Every council member has a thousand dollar Surface Pro that we handed them, right? Why are we calling in on cell phones and not, it would be much easier to log in to the Zoom with the Surface Pro that we handed every council member?
I don't think that was offered to them. I don't think the opportunity to, to use the Surface, I think we just gave him the number, I think. Kelly?
Here's Councilman Rovell calling in. So you could hear us, but we can't hear you. Is that it, sir? So what he's saying, Mayor, is that he can hear us and the people that are on the Zoom call could hear him when he's talking, but we can't hear him or Marie.
How does he know the people could hear him on the Zoom call? They having their own conversations?
We heard him though during the roll call when he said.
I hear you for the roll call, right? And it's same number with ID and the password?
Are you muting?
It's not my thing to fix. I'm, I'm here, okay?
Are you muting?
Can we just put your phone by the, like that for a little while?
Somebody should call Marie and I could use Steve.
Steve, just, just, just say a few words and we'll see if this picks up. Hold on.
No, because, no, we, we, the conference bridge that we. Because we're doing Zoom.
You can hear us, correct?
I can hear it kind of, yeah.
Okay, so if you could hear us, and I put my phone next to the mic, we could hear you.
Okay.
We could hear you, Steve. And if somebody wants to call Marie, we could probably do the same thing. You have a microphone?
Jacket is not a microphone.
So Vinnie, could you call Marie and put, you don't want to put your phone?
Of course.
You know what? Hold on, let me, let me, hold on one second, Steve. I could do this on a conference call. I'll do a conference call.
We are techno here.
I know she'd answer for the chief if she called. Everybody would. Marie, hang on one second. Tell her she's on, so she knows. Hey, Marie? Marie, I have Steve and you on a conference line and I have the phone up against the microphone. So as long as you can hear us and you speak, we should be able to hear you.
We could hear you.
All right, we're, we're in business. All right, well, good. Where were we on the agenda?
You, you're up, report of the manager.
So the report of the manager is going to be a little abbreviated tonight because I did have a PowerPoint presentation, but as you can see, we're having some little technical.
No, actually, the technical difficulties we're having have nothing to do with your inability to share the screen. That's the setup of tonight's meeting.
But that's not my fault.
No, no, it's not the technical difficulties. We're never going to be able to do that.
You get credit.
All right, I get credit for doing, okay. So anyway, first, let me just obviously welcome everybody back to the live meetings. It's great to see, see you. Thank you for wearing your face mask. I do want to just acknowledge in, in the room tonight, we have some department heads and I do truly appreciate their efforts. We always lead off with our, our chief, Chief McKinney, thank you so much. We have our fire. We always lead off with our, our chief, Chief McKinney, thank you so much. We have our fire chief, Chief John Oliveri. Colleen Brown is our health officer in the back row, and Bobby Welter, who was our newest, uh, department head as the superintendent of public works, doing a great job. Our newest, uh, member of the team, I didn't miss anybody, right? Our newest, oh, Yara, our court director, thank you. And our newest member of our, our team is our new CFO, uh, Kimberly Kynz. And, uh, we, we welcome you for, so, so for the residents that haven't been able to come to the meetings. Now you get to see our CFO, she's doing an excellent job. So I'd like to certainly, uh, acknowledge them. Um, part of my PowerPoint presentation was going to be some pictures of the stadium, as far as the progress that we're making, the retaining role, we are on schedule, um, and things are going well. Weather has been very cooperative. We just recently, uh, found out about a June fifteenth deadline. For, uh, DEP is providing, uh, up to five hundred thousand dollars with urban grants, uh, for parks. It's called the Urban Parks DEP Grant, up to five hundred thousand. Uh, actually, this past week, uh, Friday, Councilman Casarelli and myself were up at Fairway. So we're eyeing some improvements of a major, major handicap accessible playscape, improvements to the, the field, a, um, a, um, what do we call the, the runway to get the equipment on the field in the back behind the trees? Access, uh, 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 road. So this is pretty exciting. It's a June fifteenth deadline, so we're pushing our pens and papers to get that done. And, um, so I think that's basically, I know we have a lot on the agenda tonight. Uh, we will definitely speak about, um, questions and answers on the agenda. And hopefully next week, I'll get to share my PowerPoint next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Excellent job. So next on the agenda is the report of the ma- uh, report of the mayor. So I always just go backwards and then forward. So I just wanna say that, uh, and thank and congratulate our Boy Scout Troop Three Fifty. I always say Three Fifty, cause that's what Vinny and I know it as, but now they're like fifty-three fifty. Something weird happened with them, but. Boy, uh, Boy Scout Troop Three Fifty, I participated with them on a Saturday morning on their Trash the Trash Day, uh, out by Route Twenty-One. Thank you for, Level Police, for paving the way for us and making sure we were all safe there. That was a busy Saturday. From there, we went to a rabies clinic. Our, our, we have two rabies clinics a year. Most people, uh, shockingly, weren't, three. Three a year. This one wasn't that well attended, but the first one of the year usually is, uh, uh, attended. Got a lot more people there, so everybody there did a great job. And from there, we ended up at Little League Opening Day. Uh, that's always been historically a great day. I will say that as Mayor, I threw out the first pitch from the mound. No bounce, nothing. My nieces said it was a ball, but I, I say it was a strike. I say it was a strike. It was from the mound, though.
We're gonna feel Cuzzy next time.
Definitely from the mound. And, uh, the council members that were present actually participated in a check presentation that day. I know that's gonna go a long way to help them. That money that we presented them did not come from taxpayer funds. That was developer funds, something this council has done for the last three years. But when we do negotiate with a developer and they give a community giveback or community contributions, historically, that money went into the operating budget and poof, it went away. Uh, this council has opted not to do that, and we actually take those investments and physically invest them in the area for which the, the money came from. So when we touted, uh, a forty-five thousand dollar or forty thousand dollar upgrade to our senior center, that was developer money. The balance of that money was gonna be at the Little League field. We had to use that money in that geographic area. Uh, I did also participate with police and fire in a nurse appreciation day at Claremas. That was a, a, a nice event. Uh, I think that was received very warmly, and I think that they really did appreciate it. They actually gave the township, police and fire a nice shout out on their social media. And then last but not least, uh, past events, uh, myself, I think, Councilman Casarelli was there, another manager was there. We did a tour of Hendrix Field. Joe D does a great job with county parks, there's no doubt about that. And we've been calling for an upgrade here in Belleville and getting something for us, and I'm glad to see that it's starting to pay off. So, six million dollar investment into Hendrix Field. Hendrix was always, as a golfer, Hendrix was always probably the worst of the three county golf courses. And I think now it's on par with Burn, which people think is probably the premier, although We Quake is also really nice, but six million dollar investment. Let me tell you something, they did not just like do new grass. They moved holes, they created new holes. They, if you're a golfer and you know what hole one or hole two is, they rearranged, it's totally different now, and, uh, they did a great job. They actually made one brand new hole in the back section of Belleville Park, which is gonna be like a cherry blossom hole. Uh, you're literally hitting into cherry blossoms. It's, it's absolutely stunning, and I think Joe D did a great job, and on that tour, we also got the opportunity to meet the facilities person. So Deputy Mayor, some of your concerns, we now have a direct contact for Hendrix Field. That's part of their maintenance crew there. Upcoming events, this coming Thursday, Coffee with the Cop. It's gonna be at Michael V's here on Washington Avenue. It's at nine AM, I think till eleven, twelve. Coffee with the Cop starts at nine o'clock in the morning. Come on down, bring the children. Uh, excellent opportunity to interface with our cops, as you know, and you're gonna know this, because the next event on Saturdays, the Community Bike Ride with our police, our police and our chief are very community minded, something that I think, I know for a fact, it, it pans out in the end. Uh, having good relationships, especially with children and police officers, is a great thing. And I think our chief is, has always been adamant on that. And I think it does pay dividends when you look at our crime, you look at some of the other issues we have. There's nothing like seeing police pull over and play basketball with kids. There's nothing like seeing police pull over and engage children at a young age, so they're taught not to fear the police or be afraid of the police. And doing things like this, whether it's Coffee with the Cop, again, this coming Thursday at nine AM, or this Saturday's Community Bike Ride, it's three point five miles. You do have to register. Information is on the website. I'll be pushing some of that stuff out on my social media probably more. You do have to register. How many? We have registered chief, you have any idea? There was a bunch. Nine o'clock is, uh, uh, in-person registration. I was, ten thirty begins, three point five miles. You can go on the bike, chief. All right, there was a bike for me, right? I, I'm told there's a bike for me.
We got bikes.
And, uh, I'm right next to you. You're gonna lead the way. All right, do the bikes have the lights on them? Or a bell? A siren or is it just a bell?
Hit the bell. Get a basket and a bell.
Okay, so that's, uh, two good events coming up this Thursday. This Saturday, I did mention the summer concert series. Belleville has had concerts in the past. We do one-offs or two-offs or three-offs. I've never really been a fan of just plopping them in the middle of nowhere like we have. We were putting more thought into it. Uh, I think space and layout and design and making a, a warm and inviting atmosphere is important. So rather than just taking a concert trailer, plopping it in the middle of a ginormous field and making people sit out in the open is, is not my idea warm, comfy and cozy. So we're actually working hard to pick the right venue where people feel comfortable, people feel enclosed. Our manager is, is taking the lead on that, and, uh, he has a lot of experience in that. Again, I'm not picking the bands. So please don't email me, email the manager. Uh, other than that, uh, let's see. So first, first in-person meeting, I thank the council members that are here in person. I appreciate it. I think the residents appreciate. I know the employees that work here every single day appreciate that we're here and we're in the building, and we're, uh, making an effort to make it easier for our residents to come in here and see their council meetings. If you had not seen the news yesterday, Belleville was in the news yesterday. Uh, it was an unfortunate, uh, incident with a, with a deck collapse. I was on the scene after a while. Uh, uh, I know po- police were there, but I know the fire was there. Uh, Chief, I think you guys did a great job. Uh, Deputy Chief Wentworth was, was, I think he was in command of the scene when I got there. Soon as I got there, I got an update, which was good for me, because I was then, uh, most people may not understand this, but when something like that happens, the media, they don't call town hall, because it's after hours. So they tend to not call the police or fire department. They find me somehow online and they try and communicate with me, and having the information to be able to provide them is important. And, uh, when I got to the scene, I think Deputy Chief was doing a great job, and I stay out of the way, and so they get a chance to update me. And again, I think everybody there did a great job. Uh, we still do have COVID vaccines available. Uh, no waiting lists. There's plenty of vaccines available. I think the county's now resuming the home program.
Yeah, we, we're doing fifteen a week.
We stopped that for a second during the J and J issue. I did communicate with somebody today that was very thankful, that email that came in the other day. Someone's daughter that was interested in that, and she was very grateful. I think she's getting a shot. Literally, like, you make the request, you get a shot within a day or two here in Belleville for the home program. Uh, we're also, I think, still doing the senior transportation. And there's absolutely no issue with county registrations. We have a, not a back way into the system, but we, we have a way to quickly and easily register people. You can contact the health department to be registered. Spanish speakers can contact the mayor's office, mayor council's office, and we have a way to get you in. Literally, you get a shot the same week that you're interested in. Next up, uh, I did last council meeting mention that I had a meeting with the manager with the Tuesday Club, the Tuesday Senior Club. They're anxious. Our seniors are anxious at getting back into resume normal life. And we've worked really hard, making sure, I have personally emailed and personally called Tuesday and Friday Clubs, ARP people, if they need seniors to get vaccinated. There's not a senior in Belleville, there's not a person in Belleville that's in need of a vaccine that can't get one, but they're anxious, anxious to get back in. I think we, today we met with, I thought was gonna be representatives of the Friday Club, because they were not at the Tuesday Club meeting. And today was a meeting with all the senior clubs. Uh, I unfortunately couldn't be there, but I was dialed in remote. And there's some interesting things happening with the senior clubs. The senior clubs in Belleville are their own operations. We have, uh, no real authority, no control of them, nor do we. But the, see, the clubs are talking amongst themselves, and they're maybe interested in merging, or they're interested in getting together to get the numbers again, having absolutely nothing to do with us, whatever, and manager was up was there today. And I was very clear, Mr. Manager, I thought, whatever the clubs decide independently is what we would support. We are not asking them to do anything, we're not pushing them to do anything. They collectively feel that maybe they can join up and have multiple days, but they're interested in maybe doing something. And, uh, we, we were very clear. We support whatever decision that they make. And, uh, we're thinking about maybe June or, no, July for them coming back into the building. They've yet to really see the upgrades that we did there, and, uh, I'm interested in potentially hosting like a, a welcome back party for them, probably sometime in June. I get a lot of complaints about PSCNG tearing up the streets. And, uh, today I had the opportunity to communicate with our township attorney, our township engineer. He gave me a list of streets that the township is redoing, milling, paving and all that. And I kept emailing him back and forth all day, saying, every time I drive from my house to work, I'm passing five or six streets that are under construction. Yet they're not on this list. And it took us all day to figure out what was going on. But it was eventually, we figured out that PSCNG is actually circling back and paving streets now. So whereas I didn't even realize that was gonna happen, because they only take up about eighteen inches right down the one side of the street. A lot of the construction you're seeing now, uh, Adelaide, Preston, Crest, that whole, that whole area over there is because PSCNG is now circling back. They're doing half the streets, so they're doing curb to the center. And they're doing, they're gonna do a great job. So everybody complains to me about their street being torn up by PSCNG. I get it. It's annoying, it's dirty, it's dusty. I get all the complaints, and there's nothing I can do about it, with the exception of saying that at least now they're circling back. I didn't know they were doing that. Uh, they're now circling back to pave those streets. So at least that's a good benefit. Um, that's almost it. I did wanna mention just uh, one or two things about, and the, the manager and I talk about this all the time, just Mr. Manager, uh, I don't know if you covered any of that, I don't think you did. Um, I know we've been doing a good job of communication. I know that this township is probably more advanced when it comes to social media and when it comes to our website. I still think there's always room for improvement. There was a water main leak, uh, not a water main leak, PSCNG had an issue, and it knocked out water to a portion of the town. It was late last night. And I'm assuming the decision was probably made not to shoot a robo-call out to the whole town at eleven-thirty at night, because only a portion of town was affected. I do think our swift reach can isolate a certain area, so.
Improve that we just recently.
So I was in contact, you were asleep, but I was trying to, to communicate with you. I think Bobby was asleep, but he actually did get back to me, so. Sorry if I woke you up. But again, I had probably four or five residents saying, we have no water. And, um, you know, I always communicate back to them. They, they find me on social media, I have no water, and it's eleven-thirty at night. And, uh, I always say, call the police department, police department can log it, police department has the authority to call in DPW. I don't, I can't do anything besides just say I'm sorry, and I'll get you an update. So I always try and train the residents that communicate with me about contacting the police department, especially after hours. They have the ability to call in DPW. Then there was some miscommunication, cause then I was told water was back on. I went back to all those residents, said, water be on in an hour. This morning I wake up to nasty emails saying we still have no water. So, and I'm not sure we figured out exactly what happened, but I'm sure, uh, Bobby can talk to the manager about that. So if we can just use the enhanced, uh, uh, piece of, so swift reach for the, for the general public is our reverse nine-one-one, basically. We used to have the ability just to send robo-calls out, those recorded lines. Now we're actually doing text messages and emails if you register on our website. So on the website, you could self-register your cellphone. Text messages have been going out, which is good. But we have the ability now to just drag on a map and call a specific portion of town. So that would be an advanced function that if Bobby is not trained, and maybe we should train the directors to actually be able to do that. Um, and that's really it for my, my mayor's report. Uh, first meeting of the month, so first meeting in a month, we have ad hoc committees here on the council. So anybody that jumps into a specific task really has the ability, free reign to, to discuss it. So, uh, I know Deputy Mayor already spoke on several topics. Do you have anything else?
Just an update on, um, the upgrade to the network and where we're at. So as of today, we only have one more building that needs a new MPLS line highway put in, so we can mesh the network together. The other locations already have the routers installed. Uh, and now we just have to con- um, to convert, cut over from the old system to the new, and then we'll all be hopefully, hopefully by the end of June, we will be on one network. Uh, through all DPW, Fire Department's, WEC, and, uh, who am I missing? And Public Works. So that'll be the pe- the last piece of the puzzle before then we go after the, um, the phone system, if we decide to go that way with all the new phones.
Nice.
Okay.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm just going left to right. Councilman DePena? Councilman Casarelli?
A little bit. I'll touch on stuff we already hit. Uh, community garden, we talked about for a minute. Uh, that's almost ready. Uh, we're working on the ordinance, I think, first reading tonight, right, Steve? Or tonight's the second reading, so after that, uh, twenty days, we'll be good. We could, uh, post stuff, people could start to actually lease the, the spaces after that, and then we'll be ready. Um, dog park, we mentioned a dog park, touch on that. Uh, the fencing's all done, it's fixed. There was a little damage, that's all fixed. Uh, the DPW did a great job landscaping around it, so thank you, Bobby, for that. Uh, the equipment came in also, they're putting that together, so that should be ready in a couple of days. So maybe next week or the week after, we could do, uh, open to the public. So, uh, that's about that, that's that. Uh, bike tour, you mentioned, the green team is in full support of the bike tour, and we'll hopefully all be there. So we'll see, uh, see you Saturday for that, and, uh, that's all I got at this time there.
Before, I know we have Councilman Revel and Councilman Burke on the phone. Before we do that, if we can just get some comments, I, I'm told that everything the manager says is repeating. I'm not sure that's happening to everybody or just the manager, so we're looking at comments right now. If, if everything's okay audio-wise, someone please just give us a comment in Facebook. I'm told everything the manager's saying is repeating.
Said it's looping, it's looping.
Is it because of my phone?
It's the phone.
If I put him on mute?
They can't hear.
So let's just.
Councilwoman, I'm gonna put you on mute.
Well, first ask if they have anything for committee reports. Just ask her if she has anything for committee reports.
Do you have anything for any committee reports?
What'd they say? Committee report.
Okay, there's so much debris behind the Wawa, you can't imagine. And I'm, I'm trying to find out who owns the property. It's really a complete mess.
This is the property behind the Wawa?
Can someone hear me?
Yes.
I can't talk, I'm on mute.
Hello?
Yes, yes, can you hear me, Councilman?
Okay, for again, yes.
Yes, we, we, we can hear you.
Okay. I mean, it's really, really a big repair back there. I don't know who owns the property, but something needs to be done.
Okay, the manager heard it, I'm sure.
I, 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 I.
Okay.
Problem too, with, uh, coming from a warehouse.
Three, four, two. Hey, can you hear me now?
I think it's difficult.
Okay, small, small within the Wawa area, we'll, I'll reach out to you tomorrow and Bobby and I will take a ride.
Okay, it's really in bad, bad shape. And we can't find out who the owner is.
I'm assuming the manager can probably find out who's the, I mean, you talk to her, Councilman, every day almost.
Kevin has the zither.
Alright, okay. Do we have Councilman Revel on the phone?
He dropped off and he tried doing the Zoom again and he said.
I'm on the Zoom. You want me to add him to my call again?
Yeah.
Hold on, hurry, hold on one second.
Why is he off your call?
He went to do the Zoom, yeah. It says he's on there, that's weird.
Hey, I'm, I'm on the Zoom, but you can't hear me, but everybody else on the Zoom can hear me. No, I mean, you know, it's, it's, uh, I know you've been meeting with the GovPilot people and, and you have some updates, but, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna even try to do it over this phone. I don't understand why Zoom doesn't work.
Since, uh, Councilman Revel just brought that up, I did want to ask if there might be an update in regards to when we would be able to take credit cards? Do we have any of that?
I am going to defer that to Councilor.
Yeah.
There's a resolution on tonight to go out for R F P, that R F P will go out, uh, uh, it's being published on Thursday Kelly? Friday. Um, and because although we don't have to competitively bid it, uh, because it's credit cards. Uh, we can get some, uh, and then, uh, we can get some benefit of the use of credit cards. And then the next, at the next meeting I'll do a resolution. Uh, we have to do a resolution under the statute that says what, um, we're gonna allow credit card use for, so somebody has to put a list together of the different things we'll use credit cards for within the township and then that'll all be in place next meeting.
Okay, does that mean that there are certain things that we shouldn't be using?
There are certain things we can't.
Okay.
Um, but I don't know what we have.
In terms of the payments?
I don't know what, what uh, through the systems we can use.
Yeah.
Um, you can't pay tax delinquencies with, with credit cards and things like that, but um, uh, what I mean is I need to know for the resolution, what we, what we offer.
So in terms of timeline, we're still in the beginning stages.
No, no, yeah, but it, this is, the, this next step is the last step, so.
Perfect.
Um, we talked about it last week and then Anthony did some research, I did some research and that's what we came up with, so.
Awesome, thank you.
The, uh, that's, the municipality doesn't pay anything, there's no cost to the municipality.
That's correct, by, by statute, um, we're allowed to church, if, as long as we pass a resolution we could put service charges on all of our fees for permits and things like that. We could put service charges on them so the township is getting its full fee. But if a person wants to use a credit card, they pay the two or three percent, whatever it is.
Okay, thank you.
Let's just, can we just, I'm told I'm now repeating, can we just all mute our phones for once, uh, mute our? It's gonna be very difficult to do a budget hearing this way. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Need a, uh, go ahead Kelly, you go first, right?
Combined conference of regular, regular.
Is your mic on Kelly? I say that one because if anybody listening online will never hear you.
Combined conference.
Can you ask her to mute herself then?
Okay, next item, we're going for a combined conference, I'm sorry, that's your job.
Combined conference of regular meeting of January twelfth, twenty twenty one.
Need a motion.
Motion, second.
With a motion made and Second Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Revel? Strumelob Burke?
Yara just took the phone because she's gonna try to talk him.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Okay, communications.
Any requests received from the residents of Overlook Avenue for a block party on Saturday, June nineteenth? The rain date of Saturday, June twenty sixth, from ten AM to ten PM.
That is one Kelly, I don't see the other one.
That was the one you sent me.
Hmm.
Yeah.
No, well, that's okay, we have time, we have another meeting, it was the uh, Cecilia?
Yeah, this is Cecilia.
I'm, I'm seeing Overlook. Right, I'm confused. We have one or two on.
One, that's the one you sent me and it was on already.
That's Overlook.
Yeah, this is Overlook.
I'm looking for Cecilia Terrace.
You didn't send me Cecilia?
Jonathan for plus, yeah, I sent it twice. I mean, I think we have.
You sent this one twice.
Okay, yeah, I'm not, but I know, I know I sent it, we have another meeting now, so we're fine. It'll be another, it's another event for June nineteenth, so.
Goes to the police department anyway.
Jonathan for plus. I know I s- I know I sent it. Cause he emailed me twice, okay, so we have another meeting, I'll get it in for that.
Perfect.
Okay, next item is the, uh, special action.
A resolution approving the application for R and R Bevel Urban Renewal LLC for long-term tax exemption.
Had to be first then.
Okay, do we, I, I, I actually would really like to have every council member on, on this vote.
You got it?
Yeah, they're getting it right now, they got one in the back.
Your mate. When does this one expire?
July.
We can't do this again.
July first.
We can't do this again.
I know.
So anybody that's wondering what's going on on social media, we're just waiting so we can dial in two of our council members for a vote.
Love it.
Believe it or not, we actually did a really good job with the audio video upgrades here. These in-person meetings are not meant to be hybrids of different people calling in and different, it's not meant to be that way. That's, the way, the way it would work is that we actually, and for the general public that's paying attention, we're just stalling for a few minutes, but we actually have a conference bridge line that's digital right there on the wall. And if a council member was sick or a professional couldn't attend, they call into a special bridge line. You would hear them over the speakers and when we speak and then a mic, they would hear us through their phone. Works really well for the way it was built, for a council member who's sick or a professional needs to call in. But having, we have the public on the line too, so it, it wasn't meant to be public friendly, it was meant to be a, a backup, a fail-safe for a council member who for some reason couldn't be here or a professional and then the public would be here. But zooming it out this way, this camera here is an unbelievable camera, but right now, while they were going through it, we're, we're using more Zoom. But while we're using Zoom, we're all using Zoom audio, it's and and we're streaming live. So the system was built to stream live to our Facebook page and stream live to our website through the equipment and software we have here, wasn't meant to do the way we're doing it.
Does anybody wanna hear a joke?
Probably inappropriate.
What, what is, what, what do dentists call x-rays?
Mr. Franklin Tony did say he was gonna thank me when, when we had our first, I'm waiting for public, you're the first one during public commenting. Okay, okay. Okay. He's not even going against your five minutes, so feel free to compliment as many minutes as you want. As soon as the compliment stops, the clock starts. Uh, can, does someone fill me in on the plan here, what, what we're doing?
So I believe.
Why don't we just use the conference bridge?
That's.
The real conference bridge.
Then, then, then you can't, that kills the Zoom.
Kills the Zoom.
Because you have, you, you're gonna get all of that feedback.
So instead we're gonna use a speakerphone here.
You're gonna get it too, but.
It's gonna be feedback.
Yeah.
Because if they're, if, if they're listening to the meeting going on, then that audio.
Mute the meeting. What I'm not understanding is I, I, there are people that are listening and hearing.
Just bear with us, members of the public, please.
You know. That the people could hear them. I know. I know. What is Yara's dent?
Kelly called for the echequidition before she was hot. Now he's freezing.
So any member of the public still trying to figure out what's going on, we're just trying to get a conference line going so we can get two other council members in for a vote. So we're just waiting on a conference line to come in, everybody that's listening to us remotely, just bear with us.
Dean is on, he said, too, if we need him. He just texted me, yeah. Won't be able to hear him, but.
I hear a clock ticking, tell.
Yeah, that's true.
So, okay, we'll, we'll play this game. Uh, now that everybody's back, who can pick out some of the changes? So that, that's, yes, that's audio video. Clock is off, two new fifty-five inch screens, one outside, now the reason why Mr. Franklin Tony would love this. We were the only municipality where planning board and zoning board experts that were testifying would set up an easel here and nobody in the audience could see anything and they would block everybody and they would present to the zoning board, planning board. Now where Mr. Iconos sits, you can plug a laptop, so now professionals no longer bring easels here, they plug a laptop in and the exhibits will be, will turn, the, the monitors can be turned and you can see zoom in, pinch and you can see all the exhibits, so. Big upgrade with three cameras, uh, three monitors there. This front bench was lowered or thinned out, this, this, this wall here was thinned out a little bit. This used to be higher.
Lost a row.
So I could not see anybody sitting, Vinnie, that's, no, we don't. The, I used to not be able to see the professionals sitting in front of us, this was much higher, so this has been cut down. Something that you can't see is every seat up here now has power and two USB chargers, so we could plug, I, I run four devices, one, two, three, four, five devices. So we could now have power, one ten outlet, two USBs, every single seat up here has that. Like I said, this was lower, brand new carpeting. Brand new carpeting.
And, and we also combine Yara's position, Yara's job for the courts, so this handles one, prior to this they had different type of mics, they had different. So it's all automated, they do it right through the crash line up there and they can actually do their Zoom meetings. Dean is on there.
Brand new, the, the microphones had been the original microphones from probably eighties and nineties, I think nineties, the original microphones. Wireless microphone, so now speakers. In our meetings now, you'll no longer stand up anywhere you are, you can come forward and the microphone is there really so that when we live stream, anybody can hear, so there's a microphone there. We are short, I still always say we're short one microphone, but, I know. But Anthony has to borrow, if, when we're fully seated, Anthony has to. Okay, uh, new soundproofing. Uh, this was all, uh, dirty and, and gray and, uh, camera up in the ceiling, obviously.
There's a monitor outside.
For overflow.
Okay.
Mayor, can I interrupt you for a second, it's Dean Donatelli, I've been asked to test if you could hear me.
We never closed. Nut was not open yet. You have to, I mean, you, you're, the lights are on, you have to drop off stuff in the drop box and you can't go in the building. We've never stopped letting the public in. And it's not, thank you, but it's, it's it was more our employees that really deserved the credit and I know that's what you meant, but they never, we did a skeleton crew for a little bit where we alternated and again, even with that skeleton crew, the employees that were home they were doing things like senior wellness calls, they were checking on seniors, they really they really did a lot, and by the way, we opened up the Tuesday after Memorial Day. So that's when we opened up full, no more skeleton, full crew, so that's almost a year ago. We've been open. And, um. Yeah.
Mayor?
Well, the judge and the, and the zoning board chairman, the planning board chairman is protected, there's, there's, there's lead. Only here though. Sorry, everybody else.
He's the only one that's gonna shoot anyway.
So, I have lead underneath me, so I, I would stand an X-ray, I guess.
Yeah.
It, it's right here, uh, also interestingly, uh, also I think if you count the to count the panels in front of us, I think there's five because thi- this was actually built, I think, for five commissioners. So there was five commissioners, so shoving nine people and eight with an attorney and nine planning board members and an attorney, ten people, shoving ten. shoving ten people into here with, that was only built for five. You'll see five sections, correct? It was, I think that was because this was built during the commission from government. No, for planning board, but planning boards up here. And part of the reason why Steve came up here was because I could not see them down down here.
That's why Tom Burke used to stand over there, so that he could see everything.
Yeah, yeah.
Zoning board turns up here.
You might have to call Dean. Dean's trying to come through, but it's not working.
All right, I think members of the public, I'm sure you entertain this walk down memory lane.
Councilman Rovell.
He's talking.
Councilwoman Burke, can you hear us?
I can hear you, hear out.
We can hear you, yes. Okay, you're good. Stay just like that.
The issue's gonna be if 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 their computers or phones are picking us up.
I texted.
Okay. All right, pledge allegiance to it. We're special action, Roman numeral ten, item number one.
Want to read the resolution again?
Please, just the title.
Resolution approving the application for R and R Belville Urban Renewal LLC for a long-term tax exemption.
So just so members of the public know, before I do a quick roll call, this is not necessarily approving any any long-term tax exemption. This is approving the application to apply. We'll be discussing that in an ordinance that's coming up in second reading in a in a future meeting. But this is not approving anything. This is just approving the application which gets it to the ordinance portion of it. So with that being said, can I have a motion to move this resolution, please?
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion made and second clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori. Now, President, Rovell.
Yes.
Strumelob Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Next, I mean, the agenda is ordinances for introduction.
Ordinance number one for introduction and ordinance approving the financial agreement for long-term tax exemption by and between the township of Belville and R and R Belville Urban Renewal.
Make a motion for introduction.
I can.
We have a motion made and second for introduction. So just so members of public know, this is what would actually create the long-term tax exemption. This is just for first reading. There will be a time and a place on second reading for the public to comment and let their voices be heard on this. Without further ado, we have a motion made in second, so I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumelob Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Ordinance number two for introduction.
Ordinance of the Township of Belville, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition of certain property known as five eighty Belville Avenue, New Jersey, also known as block two five zero one, lot two, and two thirty-three Franklin Avenue, Belville, New Jersey, also known as block two five zero one, lot one point zero three, and if necessary, authorizing the institution of eminent domain proceedings.
Make a motion for introduction.
Second.
We have a motion made in second, just so the general public knows, lot of lots, lot of addresses, this is also commonly known as the Great Lawn. We have a motion made and second clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yeah.
Strumelob Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. B, ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing and ordinance to amend ordinance number three, four, nine, zero, creating personnel positions and adopting classification and compensation plans.
Make a motion open for public hearing.
Second.
We have we have a motion made in second to open for public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're now open for public hearing just on this particular, let me just get organized here. This is just on this particular ordinance. If you have any comments, we're gonna start, we're gonna reverse everything. Usually, we go with online people or email people. At this point, any member of the public that's sitting here physically, if you have a comment just on this particular ordinance, now would be your chance to speak. Mr. Frantantoni, just gonna have you come forward, sir. Just, Chief, can you make sure that mic is on for him? You might be our wipe down guy, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, if you'd save me and the clerk sometime for me file an Oprah, if you'd just explain what this is all about.
Sure. This is the, I, oh, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, if I am, this is parking enforcement officer. We we used to have two parking enforcement officers, one retired, we did not fill that seat, just wanna repeat that job that we could have filled this council, this manager chose not to fill a job that was vacant. Instead, the person that is there is taking on slightly additional responsibilities and duties and getting a small increment raise there, net savings, though, overall. Right or wrong, Chief? Thank you. That's it. See, nobody else here in the public that has anything to say. If anybody is on Zoom audio, gonna ask you to unmute yourself and just speak only on this particular ordinance, please. I don't hear anybody. Before we close it, just give a glance at comments in case somebody's having an issue.
Yeah, there's that little chat thing in the bottom.
I'm not seeing anybody, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to close and move for final adoption.
Motion.
We have a motion made in second to close and move for final adoption. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumelob Burke. Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance is approved. Ordinance number two for public hearing and ordinance supplementing the township's revised general ordinances with new chapter thirty-two bamboo and invasive plants to prohibit the future sale, planting, and regulate the existing plantings of invasive species of vegetation within the township.
Need a motion to open public commenting?
Motion.
Second.
A motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so again, any member of the public that's here physically present, if you have a question on this particular ordinance only, now would be your chance to speak. Seeing none, I'm gonna ask any member of the public that's on the Zoom audio, if you have anything to say, please unmute yourself. This is just on this particular ordinance, which is the bamboo ordinance. There hasn't been much discussion about this tonight while we're waiting to see anyone's comments. We did discuss this in a council caucus meeting. Bamboo is very invasive. Anybody who plants it, it spreads like like a weed, and it's uncontrollable. So this would actually prevent, would ban it in Belville. And did we actually go as far, did we do the stores or no?
We did.
We did. That was a recommendation that I had to also prohibit the sale of it in Belville, and we accomplished that. Okay, need a motion to move, close and move for final adoption.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to close and move for final adoption. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yeah.
Strumelob Burke. Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance is approved.
Ordinance number three.
An order to amend the revised general ordinances of the Township of Belville, chapter eight dash sixteen, handicapped parking spaces.
Make a motion open for public hearing.
We have, but I hear a second. I think I hear a second. We have a motion made and second to open for public commenting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So any member of the public that's physically present that has a question on this particular ordinance and this particular ordinance only, gonna ask you to, please come forward, man. Just gonna ask you to state your name and address for the record.
Susan Valeri, and I live on Emmett Street. I saw this in the paper, and I tried to address this for over a year now because there are two assigned parking spaces on my street that the homes have been sold. The people who got those parking spaces are no longer living there.
Okay.
And the signs have not been removed, and for some reason, I think they thought that it came with the sale of the house.
Address.
Seventy-five and twenty-seven. Yes.
Done. So we will have to do, I mean, that wasn't necessary on this particular ordinance, but it's fine. We'll, it just so you know, there's a process now. The chief is well aware of it. It you will see in a future council meeting, an ordinance just like this to remove, it will take two votes at the council, and then the, we have to, yeah.
You know, my question is.
It's an ordinance, you have to.
It's a year, over a year.
Cause every year we.
Well, you know, that's what that says.
You have to pull sign off first.
The ordinance says, yes, we, they have to, if they don't qualify, we can pull.
Okay, so the signs will be removed, and then we'll take action legally.
I understand, you know, that.
Takes up to a year, man.
I get that, but my point is, do you even bother to see if these people have driveways? You know, parking, parking is at a premium, you know, and when they, the one, twenty-seven.
Without getting into it, the driveway itself does not necessarily prohibit you, it's the whatever's easier for the handicapped person. Without getting into it, that's.
Okay, wow, driveway, you know, driveways, two car garages, and they're getting a spot.
I hear you a lot in cloud, I don't make the rules, I just enforce them.
Two are gonna be removed, though.
Okay, I don't make the rules.
Think that's a win.
Okay, anybody that's on Zoom audio that has anything to say about this particular ordinance? Just keep an eye on comments, just in case someone's having difficulty. So I'm gonna need a motion to close and move for final adoption.
Motion.
Second. Motion made in second to close and move for final adoption. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yeah.
Strumelob Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance is approved.
Ordinance number four.
In ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Township, Belville, chapter eight dash sixteen, stop sign intersection designated.
Motion open for public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to open public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any member of the public sitting here presently, physically, in your physical form, have any comments for this? No. Any member of the public that's joining us on Zoom audio, just unmute yourself, please. No, no comments? Okay. With that being said, I need a motion to move and close and move for final adoption.
Motion.
Second. Motion made in second to close and move for final adoption. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumelob Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Ordinance number five.
Ordinance supplementing the township's revised general ordinances with new chapter thirty-three, parks, recreation area, and open space. Chapter thirty-three dash one, community garden.
Make a motion open for public hearing.
Motion made in second to open public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any member of the public? Yes, sir. Just come up and use the microphone, please.
I think it's.
Um, I believe at the last meeting, I, you mentioned something at the end that the language was supposed to be changed. And I looked online yesterday, and if that language is still there, or has it been changed, it's correct corrected.
I know when we voted on it last meeting, you voted on the amended form.
But amended, right. But I'm just saying, but when I looked online, it's still, the old language is there.
It was, it was changed.
Okay, no, but I'm just saying, but when I looked at it yesterday, it was still there, that's all.
No problem.
Okay.
It was changed the day after the last meeting.
No problem. Anybody else? No. Seeing none, any member of the public that's joining us via Zoom, if you have anything to say about this particular ordinance and this particular ordinance only, please unmute yourself. Okay, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close and move for final adoption.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to close and move for final adoption. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yeah.
Strumelob Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Ordinance number six for second and final reading.
An order to amend the revised general ordinances of the Township of Belville, chapter eight dash two point nine, parking time limited on certain streets.
Motion open for public hearing.
We have a motion made and second to open public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any member of the public sitting here in the present, come on up.
Chief.
Chief.
One question, what happened to the clock? I'm so used to looking at the clock for my five minutes.
Well, actually, during public comment, during commenting on second readings, there is no time limit.
Okay, if you need a clock, I'll be happy to buy you one if. Got a timer.
I have a timer, don't worry about it.
Me a caller, I'll pick one up. All right, um, you're talking about street public service before. Just wanna let you know, uh, they did all my street last year, last summer, a year ago. They paved half a street, which you mentioned, but they they ripped it up and they're paving it again. And any rationale behind that?
No, but hold on, Larry, this is, this is not public hearing yet. It's not, it's not public commenting yet.
All right, next.
When you said public comment.
We're gonna deduct thirty minutes, thirty seconds when you do come up, though. Anybody on Zoom audio that has anything to say about this particular ordinance? Okay, seeing here none, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close and move for final adoption.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to close and move for final adoption. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yeah.
Strumelob Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Okay, next, I mean, the agenda is public commenting. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to open public commenting.
Motion.
We have a motion made in second over public commenting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, Larry, we're gonna bring it back up.
Anyway, about the public service, any reason they would rip up a brand new street from a year old, and they milled it today, and they're gonna pave it again. I, just a little lost there. I mean, I'd rather see them do a street for you for nothing if they're gonna rip up a brand new street, and there's, they're not doing anything to it. I don't know.
We do, we. Yeah, we.
No, but they're done. They did that last year. They did it, they're done. They paved it, half a street. And now in the neighborhood of Bell Street, DeWitt, Greylock, they're milling, but they milled the street that they paved it a year ago. They didn't do anything to the street, it's done. They did all the gas lines.
But what they do is they come back after they actually do the work. So they may have done the work several months ago on that street, so then they come back and they've done it.
No, they they did that already. They did it already.
We gotta look into it.
Just give me the street.
Oh, we have, we have Bobby here.
There's a couple of hall dishes that they dug down that collapsed, and the repairmen saw that. As far as the whole street, I pulled out of that, I was.
That's a whole street.
Okay. Thank you.
You brought up that five eighty Franklin Avenue, which reminds me of the project going on behind it that Alamo Realty owns. Is there any reason in the world that this project can go, I mean, I know, I think they got an eleven-year tax abatement on that one, if I remember correctly, a twelve-year tax abatement. How is it possible that is, do they have to keep reapplying for permits? Or can they just take a permit out and take forever to finish the project? They're not even building a building.
You say you're talking about the Silver Hospital?
Yeah, the Silver.
They're actually ready for COs probably in July, they told us, and just so, just so you know, the tax abatement does not begin until COs are issued.
I know that, that's one, to be honest, I'm bringing.
So actually, we're we're happy they're paying full boat right now.
Yeah, I mean, okay, that's that, um, the thirty-nine dollar tax increase, that's really nice, but I never, I never believed your five or six million dollar tax increase, because I remember at the last budget meeting, in all these years, normal budget goes up automatically, we know new income, one to fo- one, one to one point five million dollars. That's automatic, so that's a great job. I just have to compliment you once in a while.
Thank you.
You know. All right, and just one last thing. Last meeting, this is the third time I'm gonna ask this question. You ready for it?
I'm ready.
Yeah, hold on, let me find it.
Time's up.
That's why I'm buying your clock. Hold on. I had to hear someone, and maybe, maybe you can email it to me this time instead of sending it by the, by postal mail, because it's not getting to my house. It was an ordinance for one point, the ordinance was one, one point nine million dollars for early retirement. I asked that at meeting before, meeting last, I, but here's the question, what are the job titles, current salary? How many people are being replaced, or the tired position's gonna be advertised for the general public or replaced? I still haven't gotten that answer. It's the third time I'm asking. So please email it to me, don't send it to me by postal.
I haven't sent anything, and the manager's promised that a couple times, so we'll, we'll get you that information.
I get that. Email it to me. I don't trust the post office.
Thank you. Ms. Frantantoni.
I gotta take this off, I can't talk with it on.
Okay.
Ms. Frantantoni, now Prospect Avenue. I've been fighting for a crossing light at Shopright on Washington Avenue for over a decade, and before me, Edith DeFeo was begging for a light there even longer. A while ago, I brought this up again at a meeting, and Mayor Michael Melham stated it would cost about a billion dollars. And they may address it when the development next to the Shopright takes place. That might be too long. I did some research on my own. First, I filed an Oprah for the cost of the pedestrian crossing light that was installed at Greylock Parkway and Forest Street, including all materials, labor costs, and unbelievable, my answer was to the Oprah, as per the engineering department, no such records exist. My second Oprah, I requested all costs and labor to the installation of the pedestrian crossing light. Recently installed on Franklin Avenue in front of the Chandelier Restaurant, including all cost material. Labor, engineering permits and any other costs related to the project. At this time, I received a response, it stated the cost of the project was twenty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars. Performed by Granada Construction. It then went to say the project was included due to the recent debts at the location, wow. Upon receiving this information, I contacted Ms. Meredith Hammond at the New Jersey DOT on November fourth, twenty twenty. I explained why we needed the light at the Shopright location and how long I've been fighting for it. She told me to contact a manager in the DOT, a person named Jamie Op- Oplinger, Oplinger. Ms. Hammond told me a council person or the ten- township manager must make the request. With the, and the DOT would look into it, a layperson can't ask for it, they, you have to do it. So, if you council persons were concerned about the debts on Franklin Avenue. I believe you would also be concerned about the debts on Washington Avenue. Since I have documented proof from my Oprah that the pedestrian crossing lights cost less than thirty thousand dollars and not one million. That Mayor Michael Melham has stated, I am sure that you. All have the courage, move quickly and get a light at the Shopright installed. And I'm not talking about one that's like on Union Avenue, I'm talking about one that is solar operated. Because that's all you need there, they have those in Montclair and on a lot of the streets where you just push the button across. A friend of mine left Shopright, this is a couple of years ago, his car was totaled. Over there, so I, I really believe that we do need the light there before somebody really gets hurt seriously. I have one other questions I'd like to ask through the chair, Mr. Graziano was bringing up about commercial, uh, vehicles. You're not talking about commercial vehicles that you park on your property on your driveway, are you?
Uh, depending where they're parked, yes, because some stay out further of the house and you're, I believe it's, uh, good by tonnage. So. If they're parked illegal, illegally on your driveway. Right, because it should be back, a setback if I'm not mistaken, and depending on the foot, uh, the, the poundage, yes, as well as in the streets.
Well, with the situation today where people have to be in their own business to make a living. And if they have it parked on their driveway on their property. But you expect them to go pay to store their equipment in a garage or something, that's ludicrous.
But you're, you're talking about like a tractor trailer, right, like not a van and a work, he said commercial, but I think he means. Bigger trucks sometimes.
The, I, I, yeah, no problem.
I'll, I'll wait till she's. Stuff you need a CDL for, that's like the, buddy.
I know.
Oh, is that?
No. Thank you, Ms. Franc Antoni, so, uh, just to comment real quick, the, uh, you are right, it, it does, it does cost about twenty-five thousand dollars for the blinking yellow lights. Uh, Washington Avenue is a four lane state highway, we have had multiple conversation, Meredith is my liaison, we've had multiple conversations with her. We've had conversations with the design team that showed us the renderings that we thought was gonna be twenty twenty-two, which is now gonna be twenty twenty-four. They have agreed to study it and look into it, they're talking about, chief, if I'm wrong, a Red Hawk, Nighthawk. No, don't worry about it, so instead of a yellow light, it's actually a red light, and it's called a Nighthawk or a Red Hawk.
It's a, it was a real traffic light that only activates, it'll be green all the time unless you press the button and then it turns red. They had one on, um, Bellevue Avenue in front of Dunkin Donuts in Bloomfield. That's what we're actually looking, which is much better because then it's an actual red light in the middle of the street, just like a light pole.
And it was about the, the whole thing, engineering, the other issue is that there is a bend there in the road that they were concerned about the bend, so we've had many conversations about that. And, uh, I know you mentioned that the development across in that area might not happen today, actually, we just took the first step to. Make sure that happened, that we could begin negotiating with the developer there, and as you heard me say, when we talked with the Little League check. When the developer gives a community giveback, it has to be invested right into that area, and that might be something that we, we, we look at with them. Uh, but we have talked about it, and it's not, it's not apples to apples, the twenty-five thousand dollar one to the four lane state highway one's a little different, but we have done that, and lastly, townwide. Townwide, no matter where you live in Bellevue, commercial vehicles are not allowed on residential property, it doesn't matter the tonnage, it doesn't matter the location. In every single residential area, residential driveway, commercial vehicles are not, we don't have huge enforcement of it, the issue is if you have a, a, um. A, a, a food trailer or a food truck that's huge, and it's, it, 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 there's a big difference between a van that's got a sign on it and a huge, uh, food truck. Right.
There was an eighteen wheeler. The cab, not, yeah, the cab, on Living Street, on.
Right, yeah, that's a little different.
Yeah.
So anybody else, uh, member of the public, Mr. Franc Antoni?
Okay, you're ready for this, I want to thank you for open meetings.
Thank you.
Next month.
I can't hear you.
Next month marks my fifty-third anniversary of attending town meetings. And, uh, it was a little depressing that, uh, my second and fourth Tuesday I couldn't come here. So I had to sit home and look at you guys on TV. So thanks for getting us back to open public meetings. I also want to thank Chief Menakini, I asked him for the problem at Cedar Hill Avenue, Mount Prospect. People parking right up to Bellevue Avenue and the, in front of hydrants, up to the park, over the crosswalk. He gave out tickets, the yellow curves were painted this week, I thank him, and so far, people, one lady. I was going off my laundromat and she got in the car, she, and I guess she was cursing him out like crazy, but it's working.
Better him than me.
We got a little bit enough, and the third thanks I want to give to my wife. She lobbied for several years to get the bicycle patrol in town, and so you're bragging about the bicycle, bicycle patrol. It was my wife who got it put into.
Came back three years ago with a mayor who totally supported it as well.
All right. That's enough thanks for one night, isn't it? Now.
How about the, how about the twenty-nine dollar tax increase? No, thirty-nine.
Wow, that's another story, that's.
I, I overreached, I overreached, I'm sorry.
Just real fast, that is a, this year is a political budget, you know? All right, and again, mayor, you know, uh, fifty-three years, I've learned quite a bit. So I've been doing this before you were born, this is definitely a political budget, but I won't bring it up tonight, I'll save you that.
I will respectfully disagree.
I'm wise to these things.
It's my hope, by the way, and I'm on the record, that we introduce a budget next year before the May election.
Oh, yeah, and you're gonna have a good budget next year, and at the budget hearing, I'll tell you why, this is a political budget.
Again, a two.
This is a political budget, so let's not go any further, you're taking up my five minutes tonight, all right? The, uh, all right?
We run a roll there.
Yeah, the, uh, to the chair, I want to address, uh, Councilwoman DePena, uh, the Small Business Support Committee on. Let me tell, we just, again, tonight, just to make sure I was, we drove up and down Washington Avenue. We've got three empty stores, and two of them are under renovation, the old Walgreens, we got another food store coming. We have a great town, we have great businesses, we don't need support telling us how to run our businesses. What we need is parking. We need parking, that's what you gotta do, now. There was, the parking lot next door was two old buildings years ago, I was vice president of Chamber of Commerce. We lobbied for years, we finally got the council, at, at the time it was the commission, to buy those two buildings, that's why we got the parking lot next door. Again, we lobbied the, the parking lot across the street, there was an old dilapidated building they wanted to sell. We put pressure on the council at that time, that's why we got that one. We, you've gotta start doing this.
So, Mr. Franc Antoni, your recommendation for Washington Avenue, which property should we acquire to make parking?
As, I'm not giving you specifically now, but as parking, uh, uh, properties come up for sale, we need these low pocket, but like that one, of course, we, we need more up and down the avenue.
I agree with you.
What Nutley's done.
I agree with you.
Nutley bought backyard lots and all that, you know, I've given, uh, Councilman, uh, Mattary would come up and they said, yeah, I plan to lease parking spaces there, they pissed on. Nobody ever took it, nobody wanted to pay a yearly fee, it was gonna take up spaces, you know? But there's, you've gotta do something, but that's where we need the help. The other thing is, what we need help, you gotta stop this high density housing, we're getting killed. You just killed my business tremendously. Number one, you tripled, actually, the technical was two hundred and fifty-three percent increase in my water bills. I'm a laundromat, twenty-three years I've been good to the people, cause I owned a building, a dollar wash, people come from all over. Now, my wife and I, two weeks ago, met in Walmart, I haven't seen you, she, I can't come there no more, I cannot come to Bellevue, I can't park. I can't park, I come with my kids' clothes, I got four or five beds, I can never park by your place and all that. So now, for the first time in twenty-two years, I've been hesitant, cause now, just did our income tax not long ago. Now we get water rates increasing, the taxes, I, I'm a negative territory, I wasn't making much, that, that's an extra thing to me, I don't live on that alone. So these are the things you gotta do, we need parking, and please, just, just leave us alone, look all successful, but look at the restaurants. You're, they're all successful, they're doing business in town, right? We need parking, all right?
Need you to wrap up, Mr. Antoni.
The, yeah, the, uh, well, I already addressed the budget issue at a later date, and the thing is, the great lawn. This is, uh, unreal, what is going on there? I hope, it's the law, I'm in domain there, this is not the time for the public hearing, but I've been. For years, buy that property, but Essex County screwed up, they should never sold it. The guy who bought it knew it was in the advertisement for sale, that this was an area to develop for open space. And Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to just reach out then, because you were involved back then, right? Here's the court case that we wound up, citizens, we wound up spending twenty-five thousand to fight that, to save that great lawn.
Quickly, Mr. Franc.
Right, just one sentence here, further at all times here above mentioned, Mayor Angie Persercher. An employer of Essex County Department of Human Services. Participated in the governing body's adoption of the ordinance, as did Councilman Michael Melon and Councilman Andrew Rizzoli, both county employees. The self-interest of the aforementioned members of the planning board and the township council tainted the actions of the planning board. So let's do this right, so you don't get involved, and I know, you talked to the lawyer about this, you may have a conflict because of your previous involvement in that. But we gotta save that great lawn, we can't have anything.
What I'm trying to do that you wanna prevent me from doing, but, but we'll settle that, I guess.
Again, I, I don't know what to do, because, and believe me.
It's, it's, it's been well known that this council's priority is to, uh, acquire and preserve that as the great lawn.
Yeah, and I have the order, the resolution, it was open space only for sitting, biking, strolling, and that's what we want. If you're doing that.
We are.
You'll get another thank you at this microphone.
I'm looking forward to that one, sir.
Jim Mealy, Nine Lake Street. Couple things, positives. I, I saw the thing about the Bellevue Stadium on Facebook, I was thrilled, and I made a comment, so congratulations to whoever you're getting that done, that's unbelievable, that's number one. Number two, the other day, I was thrilled to see, uh, a truck on Lake Street, uh, that was degreasing the sewer proactively. I was thrilled to see that, but it was interesting, I talked to the guy, cause, cause, cause the town replaced that sewer line. I wanna say two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, something like that, I remember the town did it to save money, they did it in the dead of winter. I, I could still remember going out there and seeing Nick Wendlin in the hole, but the interesting thing was that the guy that was cleaning out the, that was degreasing it. He said there's all sorts of holes in the sewer line, I said, how could that be, it's brand new, it's eight years old. So I thought that comment was worth passing on since I happened to be here. Number three, totally separate and apart, I own a four family on a carpenter terrace, and, um. With the redevelopment, in fact, I was here at the meeting when they talked about. The apartment house that, you know, redoing the Soul Hospital, and I remember the, the amount of parking spaces they were gonna allocate there, I think it was one point five for each apartment. And I said, that's not enough, and I remember the, the expert that the head is, said that that's more than legally is required. So my point is that I just heard the other day that. Because the boundary lines have been drawn up, you know, technically now, people from the Grogan property are now parking on the street, cause they lost about fourteen or fifteen parking spots. And I remember at that meeting, my friend here, Mark Menakini, cause I was saying, the parking on Carpenter Street, uh, street is terrible. That the county gave us eight feet of space and we made parking spots on the right-hand side, and that's helped a lot, and I remember during that meeting, and you can go back and look at the minutes. Mark said, Jim, if it becomes a problem when they, when they, you know, open that place up and there's not enough parking there, we'll have designated parking spots, uh, on Carpenter Street. Permit parking, right? Right.
Okay.
And since I happen to be here, I just thought it was worth bringing that up again, because, you know, my tenants always have a tough time parking.
No problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I will say that I, I used to live in the Grogan building for about a year or so, but there's no access to Carpenter from there.
Well, there will be when they open up that, well, you can walk, if you.
Right, but you wouldn't be able, oh, I see what you're saying, park your car and then, there's no, I mean, there's a fence, there's, there's no.
Fence there.
Sure, there's.
I'm there every day, there's no fence.
Okay.
It's down now.
Oh, okay, so I, I, when I lived there, I'm, I'm only going back a year.
I guess unless they put a fence up, it will separate the properties.
Okay, so that, that is, so, uh, just so you know, historically, the council only does permit parking, one, based on police department's recommendations. It really only happens in bordering, uh, bordering streets, so for instance, Nutley has permit, uh, Nutley has no overnight parking in the street. So therefore, any street that borders Nutley, so the overflow doesn't come, we'll do permit parking there, we historically don't do it in the center of town. Uh, the only other place that's not a border would be, I think, in the vicinity of the light rail for, 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 uh, transit commuters, but as the chief. Uh, obligated us to, to, to look into it.
We're losing parking spots when they.
They opened that gate, I know, I, I have friends on Carpenter, so, okay, no problem, we will definitely do that. And then I think Bobby's here, he probably heard your comment about the sewer line, so, thank you. Anybody else that's here physically present?
Hey, Carmella Fleischman, eighty-three Main Street, first of all, it's lovely to be back, you know, all the lovely improvements are great. Question, is there a town ordinance for people that they have to put their garbage in garbage cans?
I believe there is.
Cause then we need to work on that.
Tommy's father can testify to that. Let me pause this.
When I put my hat in the race, my father caught it left and right, that his father is not in camp.
So yes, we do, but it's because of road incidents, because of all kinds of other stuff.
But it's, I, I've noticed it, you know, obviously, coming back out after the, you know, being locked down, yada, 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 I've noticed today, it's really getting disgraceful. You know, so we need to work on that, and secondly, in, you know, thank you for the cleanup on Main Street, you guys did a really, really nice job. You know, so like I said, no, no negative tonight, so you're off the hook tonight.
We should've came back in person a year ago.
Yo, huh, see?
I think they're just softening it, they're softening us up for the next council meeting, thank you. Thank you. Motion closed?
I think he's, uh.
No, I, I, no? Okay, Jeff?
By the way, I want to thank you all for having a public meeting. You don't know how much I love it that we have a public meeting, because you know why? Once you did that, I called the manager, and now as of next month, the zoning board is gonna go on public meeting.
Nice.
And the reason we're doing that, we had so many problems with Zoom, it wasn't funny. Matter of fact, the April meeting, Mr. Gassion couldn't get on for an hour. Was disgr- and our members were all disgusted with it, so I'm very happy about that, now. The ordinance that's for introduction, about the great lawn, you said you're taking that as open space?
It is right now deed restricted.
Right term?
No, it's not deed restricted, it's a, it's in a redevelopment, it's in a redevelopment area.
But it's listed in the redevelopment area as either open space or parking, I believe.
No, or, or open space, passive park.
Parking for accessory use, for, for a, a primary use, which it's not going to be used because as part of your other, the other development, they're not using that for parking, but. They'd have to own it to, to use it for parking, and they did, they don't own it.
Okay.
For, uh, parks and, and.
Open space, passive recreation.
All right, so we're gonna be using this for pass, in other words, are we gonna be using it for open space, is that what we're saying?
It's our goal.
Okay, now, let me ask you a question. Does that mean that we're gonna be able to get money from the county for that, cause I understand county gives municipalities money for open space?
We would be able to apply for a plethora of grants for that.
Okay, good, okay, next question I have is the corner of Mill and Franklin Avenue. Next question I have is the corner of Mill and Franklin Avenue. I understand, we had an announcement years ago that we were getting money or the county was going to do it, they were going to expand that intersection to add another left turn lane. Whatever, it's never been done. Is there any way to find out what's going to happen?
Manager? I'm sure he's, just write it down, find out.
Yeah, give me, give me a day to get back to you on that.
Yeah, no problem, you can come back to me at the next meeting, you don't have to call me, don't worry. The, um, another thing is, you said there's going to be a driveway now on, on Carpenter from this project? Don't they have enough parking?
There is a curb cut, there, I think it's already there, the curb cut's already there.
It wasn't there before.
No.
It was all fenced.
The Belgium block down there for the parking.
Right, there, there, there's definitely a curb cut there, because I know the residence directly across the street.
But now that's going to take all the parking away from the people on, on Carpenter.
It's at least two spots for the curb cut.
No, I mean for the curb cut, but also now, anybody from that building who may want to park on Carpenter Street will park on Carpenter Street. Plus the.
I don't know why they would if they have a park.
Plus the Grogan building, which came before our, our, our zoning board, and we approved, uh, there was supposed to be a certain amount of parking spaces for the Grogan building also, inside, not on Carpenter.
There is, I used to live there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So why would we want to have a curb cut there and open? So now people from both buildings can now take up parking spaces on Carpenter.
This council didn't make that curb cut, uh, that went before either a planning board or zoning board.
Never came before zoning, I can tell you that right now.
Planning that.
It's just an exit.
Yeah, it's only an exit.
But what happens is now, there's an open area where it used to be fenced, where now people can come from either building and utilize parking spaces on Carpenter. It only hurts the people on Carpenter, and, and there's a number of people that live on Carpenter in those apartment buildings that don't have parking spaces, won't even approach me when they, well, can we make an application to move in because we own, I think he owns one of the buildings, that have extra parking in front of his building, well, you have to make an application, as you go down and see Mr. DiLorenzo. But that's what I'm talking about, stuff like that. And I think it should be resolved, you know, because otherwise it's just going to hurt the people on Carpenter.
I think the plan was approved that way, I mean, there's nothing, yeah, we can't take away a curb cut that was granted with the development.
Well, maybe the planning board could do it if they feel that there's a problem.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else who's physically here? Seeing none, we're going to go to anybody that's on Zoom audio. Do we have anybody on Zoom audio? Can you just check comments to make sure someone's not trying to speak? Okay, so without further ado, we entertain a motion to close public commenting.
Motion to close.
We have a motion made in second to close public commenting, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on our agenda is resolutions. Anybody have anything to pull?
Nope.
No? Okay, can entertain a motion to move the consent agenda.
Motion?
You have a motion made in second to move consent agenda, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell. Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Next on the agenda is new business. Any council member have anything for new business? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to make a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
We have a motion made and second for adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.